Hello.
Thank you very much. Please remember to silence your phones, pagers, and other devices. Item number two is Citizen Concerns. I did invite Mr. Green here from Sulan District Health. Before we continue, Karen, do we have a phone number that folks can call in if they want? Two-two-four-six-zero-one-four? Thank you for those listening at home and all the ships at sea. Mr. Green?
Yes, good afternoon. This is a big week. We're doing two public clinics. We have 3,000 appointments scheduled for that. That is the first dose clinics. There are 1,000 tomorrow, Tyson Event Center, 2,000 on Friday. In addition to that, we are holding within our building the second dose clinics for the healthcare professionals. So by the time Friday night at six o'clock comes around, we should have close to 4,000 doses have been delivered in this week alone. And so this week, we've worked on kind of confirming what our supply chain will be. We're hoping to get a minimum of 1,000 or a little more doses per week. So we can continue with some level of clinics on a weekly basis. Right now, we're at the 65 and older, the tier one. We're still working through the PK through 12, childcare, daycare, early childhood, and then also the first responders. And those are part areas, and we've worked through that tier first before we move on to anything else. In this past week, we did have one facility that I think we haven't worked out. I put them in connection with another entity. They kind of were, there was something that occurred in the long-term care elderly housing sort of thing. Many of you have heard from the individual, and we did get it worked out that they should be able to get one of the pharmacies there on site for allocation that they can get their needs met. And that would be 100% of their residents. So those will be others that are outside of, and we're kind of adjusting our dosing to future clinics resulting in that. Some of the other things then that are, you know, going on just within the health department, so you all know that the governor did change as far as her mandate last week, did relieve most of the mitigation efforts that were included that have been in place since the middle of November. One of the things, you know, in this last indicator report, it's brought our positivity rate at this point in time since November when it was closer to the 14 to 17%, it's now down about 5%. And so that is in a positive trend and a move in the right direction. And those are things that indicate the relationship towards, we have fewer cases, which means they're going to probably expose fewer people, which hopefully then we reduce the number of cases overall. So I think those are some things that are going on in the battle against COVID. So I'd entertain questions, I guess, from any of you as board members.
Yes, you know, we had taken quite a few calls or emails and things from elderly people having a hard time figuring out how to get signed up or how to get images or things uploaded so they could get their vaccine. Is there a way or just a simple way for somebody who could just maybe call and talk to somebody?
There's actually two things that we've done since that point in time. I mean, to be honest with you, we did 3,000 appointments scheduling in an hour and 40 minutes.
Yep.
And we, that's, it just blew us off the, you know, we had no idea it would go that quickly. This time with the appointments we're offering for next week, just to give you an idea, on February 1st, I pulled the, had Andy pull the phone. We, Sulan District Health Department, our main number received 3,492 calls in one day alone. Yesterday, we did announce in the press release, our phone bank number, the 3-9-2-2. That went out in mid-afternoon, and by six o'clock last night, although it was not answered, he did check, there were 1,292 individuals or phone calls attempted with that number. So we will experience a high volume of calls tomorrow. I will have that staffed when the line opens, and they will then support those individuals. But one of the things we'd like to emphasize is the fastest, most efficient way is to do it online. If our residents would at least please have some respect and allow those individuals that don't have the technology connectivity to be able to use the phone system, that's probably what we prefer. And I think some of the other things we did within the registration process is we reduced the amount of information that was requested of individuals. So there'll be no requests in there for uploading of any of the insurance cards and that type of thing. And part of that decision came about because originally, we hadn't been afforded a lot of dollars related to it, and we received additional funds from the CDC to begin to support this. So it wasn't quite so critical over the period of time that we kind of recaptured some of that revenue.
So what's the relationship between District Health and Walgreens?
Nothing.
Nothing?
The pharmacy network is something that has come out, they were actually contracted with the National Pharmacy Network to serve the long-term care facilities. They were all partnered with those in Woodbury County, and so they did provide that. What has happened at this point in time is out of that National Pharmacy Network, they were allotted from the federal level X doses of the vaccine. When they finished a long-term care project, they had doses that were not utilized by them. We did had made the request, would they consider putting that back into our distribution change? That both pharmacies, CVS, and Walgreens said they wanted to do their own independent. So they kept those doses, and that's kind of what, when you've seen those releases and the information and what they've done for their shots, that's out of, that does not reduce our allocation. That really is something that has come through a separate source, and so that's them distributing it. We have no control and no authority over it.
But it should reduce some of the pressure on you.
The only problem it is, is when their system doesn't work, everybody calls us. So it doesn't necessarily reluce the workload, but it does get more citizens or residents vaccinated.
Is there any communication between District Health and Walgreens?
Finally, we've gotten it just because I just sent some email communications that went up to the Iowa Department of Public Health and just, I kind of asked because we started all of a sudden experiencing a volume of calls. And so I just ran it up and I said, you know, you're burning us. We're trying to get services done, but we're fielding calls related to their plan. And then pretty soon, I knew I had contacts with that.
Is there a resource available where you line up those who receive the vaccine through Walgreens so that at least you know then of Woodbury County's residents who has received it and who does not? Does that exist yet?
Yes. What it actually works at is that's a standard immunization registration system, and that's where the doses are to be loaded into this. This is really a federal database, but Iowa uses Iowa registration. So any dose that we give is also loaded into that. So that when we want to look up an immunization record for any residents, we have a lot of parents get it for their children's school age vaccinations, but it's the same system. So we're able to go in and to verify if they've received it or not, and then specifically what dose. And that's going to become more crucial as we move forward because one of the things we need to guard against is that if they receive the first dose of one brand, their second dose should be identical. We need to make sure that we're, have a process for verifying that. So they don't go through and maybe they go through them and get Pfizer, and then they come through one of our Moderna clinics. We can't give them the second dose. You're not supposed to mix across with those.
How many nurses are going to be doing that work tomorrow?
Tomorrow, we are working with the whole healthcare. What's interesting tomorrow is we're doing with the Healthcare Consortium. And so tomorrow, the nurses are coming from the Sulan Community Health Center. We will have eight nurses with eight vaccination stations. We're projecting between 250 and 280 per hour to be served through the process. We've kind of got a goal of saying the length of appointment, we're hoping is 45 minutes or less. And that includes a 15-minute wait period. So those are some of the things we're looking to set up for efficiencies. Really concerned in trying to take into perspective just the temperature, the weather that's going to be out there getting people inside. We have things set up as far as for the clinic with the certs is going to be assisting with some of the, those that have a mobility challenges to be able to get them up to the door. And so they don't have to, you know, worry about some of that. I think the biggest thing as far as for the residents or those that have appointments is please arrive no sooner than five minutes ahead of your appointment. There's a tendency with some individuals to be there 30 minutes early. They're going to clog up the system. And that's what's going to make it a challenge to get everyone inside the doors and to get it to flow kind of consistently.
So I think you mentioned that people that are capable of filling out the registration online, that's the primary thing they can do to help right now?
Yep, that'd be the primary thing. If they've got the technology and the compatibility, they just go in and do that, and then let those individuals call the phone number for assistance.
Not to put you on the side, anything else the public can do to help you do your job?
You know, we can ask for patients, but I know that's getting thin is what it is. We just will, as doses come, we, we would hope to offer a clinic every week if the doses come in and continue to work through that.
So that brings up a point. Is there anything you can do or we can do as a board to get more vaccines here in a week? Or are we just going to get what we're allocated?
Every county in the state is clamoring for more vaccine. The one thing that I have been pushing them is the, just because we're a border state, we should have sort of a bumped up allocation to accommodate for some of the challenges that that actually creates. But I would say within the state, the state gets X amount. It's a population-based. Right now, they're putting in parameters where you have to have 80% of what you've received delivered within a week timeframe. So we're working those plans to be assured that we accommodate with that. And so doing everything we can to keep the vaccine flowing in.
Just to, just to be clear to the public, there's nothing, you know, we can do as a board or as politicians to make more vaccines magically arrive. They're coming as they're produced, and we're getting allocations.
Right. That's exactly what it is. And I think one of the things that we'll see now is, I mean, the nice part of it is, is that all of our long-term care facilities have received the first dose for sure, and most of them have received the second dose. So that audience, those and their staff are covered. So that is, that's out of the way, and then hopefully then we begin to see now more allocations.
Little-known fact. Cleaned out our safe deposit box, and I was going through it yesterday. I found my immunization record, 1956, two shots of Salk vaccine.
I wasn't born yet. I asked Mr. Green to come here for part of the public record in that I, and I think Matthew got an email from a gentleman that almost seemed to allege that there's something nefarious going on with our distribution system, and, and I can assure, do my best to assure the public as well as Kevin Green here with Sulan District Health that that is not the case. That it's just a logistical nightmare, and we're just wishing and hoping and working as hard as we all can to get those that want the immunization, make it available to them. So I, again, I asked Kevin to come in here and speak for three minutes.
And then, of course, if anything's not been on the press, you know, anything that they can do to help cover that, all the information that was given. You know, obviously, the press is a partner in informing the public as much as anything, so.
That's why we were talking. I don't know if we've ever, I mean, there's been a small handful of times we've had to decline to be able to do an interview. They've been a willing partner, and they're all the time to ask the questions and us to respond. So they're an important part of the education that occurs. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item three, approval of the agenda. I will move that.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Ung. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Items four through nine constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item four, approval of the minutes of the February 2nd meeting. Item five, approval of claims. Item six, human resources. A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. Six B, authorization to initiate the hiring process. Number seven, county treasurer. A, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for the Y E S home sales, spelled Y-E-S, home sales. B, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for Y E S communities. C, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for Lake Forest MHC. Seven D, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for initials K F. Number eight, juvenile detention, received juvenile detention January population report. Item nine, board administration. A, approval of resolution for tax suspension for initials G J. Item B, approval of listing tax suspensions for petitioners who failed to recertify their income or income does not qualify for continued tax suspension. Any questions on an individual item for the consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Radig, second by Monson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Item 10, Board of Supervisors. Mr. Monson has asked and gotten approval for and presentation of proclamation to honor Black History Month in Woodbury County. Mark?
Mr. Ike Rayford is going to tell us a little bit about Woodbury County and black history. Please come forward.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Monson, and of course Chair DeWitt and supervisors. Thank you for this opportunity to address the board and residents of Woodbury County in honor and celebration of black history. Hey Keith. African-Americans have contributed significantly to the building and progression of this nation, and Iowa is no exception. Iowa is filled with a rich history of the struggles blacks faced and the resulting triumphs. I want to share just a small look into this exciting history here in Iowa. We always hear about Brown versus Board, but did you know that Alexander Clark Senior, who helped African-American men earn voting rights in 1968, did his best to give his children a better life? A year earlier, his 12-year-old daughter, Susan Clark, was denied admission into her neighborhood school in Muscatine because of her race. On his daughter's behalf, for her right to attend, Clark sued the Muscatine Board. The case went to the Iowa Supreme Court, which held that segregated schools were inherently unequal because the law makes no distinction as to the right of children to attend the common schools. The decision led to the integration of Iowa schools. Eighty-six years before Brown versus Board of Education, in which the U.S. Supreme Court ruled that racial segregation in public schools is unconstitutional, and that happened here in Iowa. Iowa's first NAACP branch was established in Des Moines in 1915. This chapter started with 35 members and increased to 200 within the first year. This was only six years after the organization was organized in 1909. The Sioux City branch traces its roots back to 1937. New York native Cheryl Brown, who attended Luther College in Decorah, Iowa, took home the Miss Iowa title in 1970 and became the first black woman to compete in the Miss America pageant. This is just some of the history that has had nationwide effects. Americans have recognized black history annually since 1926, first as Negro History Week and later as Black History Month. What you might not know is that black history had barely begun to be studied or even documented when the tradition originated. Although blacks have been in America at least as far back as colonial times, it was not until the 20th century that they gained a respectful presence in history books. I encourage everyone to take the time to recognize this rich history of Iowa. And by the way, did you know just south of town, there is an old Friedman Cemetery? It's called Black Cemetery, right just south of town. Or if you are really interested, you can look up Buxton, Iowa, which was one of the most thriving towns for blacks in Iowa. Even right here in Woodbury County, Mr. George Boykin was elected the first black county supervisor, not only in Sioux City, but in the state of Iowa. As in other parts of the country, blacks in Iowa have faced struggles and discrimination. But despite these barriers, many have become outstanding individuals in their fields. Many others have lived every day as ordinary Iowans. The struggle against racial discrimination, separation, and racism continues to be an issue in Iowa and other parts of the country, but the history of the past 200 years suggests that those on the side of freedom, equal opportunity, and humanity will win. And that is why I thank you for this recognition and observance today.
Thank you. May I read the proclamation?
Would you please?
Proclamation, Black History Month, whereas in 1926, Dr. Carter Woodson, of Harvard Scholar, established the observation of African-American history with the desire to reveal the contributions, achievements, and involvement of African-American people of our country that for years had been omitted. And whereas in 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial Black History Week, was expanded and became established as Black History Month and is now celebrated all over North America. And whereas we must acknowledge and pay tribute to the generations of our citizens who struggled with adversity, risked their lives for justice, fought a fight that at times seemed impossible to win, and who contributed to the fight for equality and the American dream. And whereas the African-American community has persevered through decades of struggle to be recognized as equal among our fellow citizens as we are all entitled to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas a month of February gives us a chance to honor the many heroes who are unknown and unnamed and who have contributed throughout our nation's history in the name of equality. And whereas Woodbury County urges all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue the efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. And now, therefore, it be resolved that the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim February 2001 as Black History Month. That will be signed. Oh, it's being signed. Uh-oh.
I will move approval of the proclamation for Black History Month.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Radig. We have a very rich and diverse, both local and national, history around our area that I think most of us take for granted, and this perhaps is just one more of those things. But this is a very unique place in this nation to live and very proud to be here.
And I want to thank you for your leadership.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes, of course, five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ike.
Thanks, Mark, for bringing that to the board. Board Administration, item 11, approve the Law Enforcement Center 90% Design Development Drawings. Kenny or Dennis, who's bringing this up?
Kenny Schmitz, Building Services. As part of the authorities agreement, the LEC authorities agreement with the county, the county has to approve the 90% design documents for the new Law Enforcement Center. The authority met earlier today and reviewed and approved those documents. And so we come before you here this evening to also get your approval. I have Shane Albrecht with the Baker Group and Kevin Ross with Goldberg Group Architects, who are here to explain anything you've got for questions. And so guys, if you want to come up, I'll let the board ask any questions that they may have of you.
Thank you.
Shane Albrecht, Baker Group.
Kevin Ross, Goldberg Group Architects.
So the authority approved not only the 90% documents, they also approved when these plans would be out for bid, when we would have a pre-bid to walk people through, and when the bids were due by. Mr. Monson, I skipped your questions twice, but I will now share with you. On March 9th, the plan should be out for the public to bid on this. The week of March 22nd, we will have a pre-bid where we invite all the contractors in to kind of walk, walk the plans, and we'll be in a big conference room to go through all that. The bids will be due April 6th at 2:30. So that, that being said, we also, Thursday of this week, have a pre-pre-bid with, with general contractors. So we published in the paper as well as made phone calls to local contractors. We've reached out to people in Sioux Falls. We've reached out to people in Missouri, Minneapolis. So there's a good group of Black McGough, Turner, J.E. Dunn, Adelson Peterson, River City, you know, Journey, a number of people, Klinger here, Local. We reached out to O-N-L. HCI, Nelson Construction. So we've reached out to a large group of people as well as gotten the thing. But we will have another one of these where we'll make sure, again, it'll be published and all the construction updates for the thing. So what we're here tonight is to ask for your guys' approval to move forward with our documents to hit these dates. Kevin, anything else?
I think you covered it pretty well on this. Yeah, we're just looking to get this wrapped up and take advantage of the bid market right now and people's interest. We've had a lot of phone calls from general contractors from all over multiple states, as Shane had mentioned. And a lot of people have talked to local brickyard here. People anticipating this project coming out of bid that really look forward to, just want to make sure we hit these deadlines and keep this thing moving forward with the progress.
I got to say, I was kind of surprised. I talked to one of our commercial contractors working on our building the other day, and they said that the larger projects have really slowed down and that most projects right now are just residential. So while you go to the Menards or Home Depot of the world and you go in, you know, it's crowded, full of people, but yet on these larger commercial projects, it's actually slowed down quite a bit. So we may just really luck out with this. That's my hope, you know, because material costs and everything surely are not in a beneficial position. But, you know, I really look forward to getting this bid out, and I, you know, I guess for means for the public here, these plans meet the needs for what we said the LEC would do as far as duplicating our existing LEC but adding bed space.
Yes. So the current plans, the current plans that we have, there is kind of a mirror image of the court space that's across the street as well as the Sheriff's Department will be out there, and then 448 beds.
With room for expansion as well too. That piece of property out there, you've got room for future expansion. Those have some preliminary plans to show how Phase 2 could be done if it aligns with expansion's needs.
And then just to point out as well, the safer vehicular Sally Port as well as vehicle forensics is all included as well.
Absolutely.
And an enlarged medical to help with that as well as the second floor having another medical area so that tries to make that safer and better for you guys in the future as well.
So yes, the medical is improved, and then also we discussed classifications multiple times to the public that we will be able to meet classification needs, and that is all addressed in these plans.
Yeah, absolutely. The way the plans are set now, which you guys previous this all early with the different makeups of the pods and different populations, it gives the Sheriff's Department the ability to classify in a lot, a lot greater capacity than what they can now and be able to fluctuate as their population changes and what do they have in custody. So yes, absolutely.
We do have a couple of things. The penthouses, I showed you for the public's knowledge, to make it easier to get to the equipment as well as some roof chase plumbing cells. So this, again, will be easier to get to.
Again, I just wanted to reiterate that we're meeting the needs that we said we would meet. Mark, just, you know, your first time seeing the plans for this project, and I know you paid attention the whole time as we discussed it, you know, over the last couple of years, but what, you know, what was your impression here?
It's like a dream. I never dreamt this was going to ever happen. I can tell you, Kenny and I and a couple other supervisors back there, or at least one more of the supervisor and Larry, sat over there in that jail for hours trying to figure out how to make that work, and it is not fixable. We can't get out of there quick enough. It's, that thing is awful. To fix a sewer problem, good grief.
Well, just from, being from the utility industry in my past, I, I see the design plans and the chase ways and all the access to the utilities and such like that. It's just, it's, it's, it's far and away an improvement, so I'm...
This is going to be something cool. I'll tell you.
Well, it's, it needs to be done right, and I want to be, I want to be here long enough to see it through and make sure that, that I and the Sheriff's Office and the rest of the board and and the authorities and those that, that helped build it are as proud of it as we can be, so.
When did you say completion?
I didn't. I quit asking. Completion would be October of 2022. So about, about a 17-month construction process.
Wow.
Yeah, there's a lot of building there that takes a lot of time to do that much detail, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys on this. The Sheriff's Department, everybody else, it's been nice. It's been a great collaborative.
On March 9th, what exactly is publicly available at that point?
At March 9th? So that's one of the plans and specifications will be available to any contractor looking to bid the, the project.
Okay.
And we'll get some details to talk about on how we'll do that, but traditionally, we've done that in two ways, both in a paper format, pay for deposit, pick up plans and specifications, as well as electronics. They can pay the small fee, or they're already members in these plan rooms, just download from these plan rooms and so forth. So they'll be made available to the public.
So it'll be published in like your construction updates and stuff, which go out nationally for people that want to be clicked in this. So that'll help bring some other interest for people that we may not, we may not... So that'll help bring some other interest for people that we may not, we may not know this thing's existing because of the size of this. It's going to bring people out of the woodwork, is what we're hoping that will want to bid on this great facility.
Yeah, and we've been in contact with some of the union representatives as well, too, that they can help spread that word about construction community. So we're really reaching out, hoping to get the great pool of competitiveness on the ground there.
Right away, it's now, that is the plan, still there's 286 pages there, that's what it carried down here.
Would you like to bring them all up here and show them to us? Page by page.
Well, I would like to reiterate thank you to you guys, but also thank you to the City of Sioux City and the Joint Authority for this partnership moving forward. You know, I think that's what's made a lot of this possible. And thank you to the voters and taxpayers that are willing to invest in this, because I think it will save us money in the long run. And I think once we get operations going, that it'll actually save us money immediately.
I will move to approve the law enforcement center 90% design development drawings.
Second.
Motion by Dewitt, second by Monson. Any other questions or comments from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Secondary roads. Approve certificate of completion for PCC crushing 2020 with Schmel and Construction for 177,000 and change.
Move it.
Work's been completed.
I'll second it.
Motion by Monson, second by Reddick. Any comments, Mark?
No, work was completed in compliance with our specifications.
Any further questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Item B, approve certificate of completion for removal of structural structure L-92-3 with Holly Brown Construction.
Work was completed according to specification.
I'll move it.
Motion by Reddick, second by Dewitt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Item C, approve certificate of completion for project for pavement markings with Iowa Plains signing for 171,960.
Completed.
Work is completed.
All right, I'll move it.
Motion by Reddick, second by Wright.
It's a lot of yellow paint.
All those in favor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Approve the certificate of completion for the removal of structure H-264 with Holly Brown Construction for $9,750.
Work was completed satisfactorily.
Move it.
Second.
Motion by Monson, second by Reddick. Further questions, comments?
Where's Holly Brown out of?
They are, shoot, I can't think of where they're out of right now. They are a fairly local contractor. I think they're out of Plymouth County.
Okay, and they're just an excavator that...
Well, it's actually named after his wife. They're an excavation company.
Pat, okay.
It's a smaller family-run operation. They do a lot of our bridge work as subcontractors, doing the approach grading and channel work for the different contractors. They partner frequently with Dixon and other construction outfits that are doing our bridges. These two bridges that were removed are old structures. One truss had been closed for over 18 years. It was just sitting there over top of the creek, waiting for a tree to come by and knock it down. So we're trying to get rid of those before they become a nuisance for us.
I just never heard of them, and...
Yeah, they, again, they've primarily been a subcontractor as opposed to a prime contractor for that work.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Reports on committee meetings. Mr. Monson, have you had any meetings yet?
I have not. But they seem to be accumulating.
We're anxiously awaiting for you to take your share, and...
That's it, we'll get her done.
Anybody else?
I'm not out. Are we going to have his assignments next week, maybe?
Yeah, we're going to need, I just talked to him this afternoon about that, so, yes, we will have that ironed out and done. Mr. Wright, anything? Mr. Reddick?
Nope.
Round two of citizen concerns. Hearing none, board concerns. Moving on to item 16, budget review discussion for FY 2022. Review courthouse security wages. General sup. Dennis?
Okay, on this one, Michelle, Melissa, and I went through this a little bit. We did a three-year comparison. Two are actually actual, one is projected. I'm sorry, three are actual, one is projected, and we looked at that. And on that case there, we actually win $22 an hour. They get paid anywhere from $18 and some odd cents, up to $22 and some odd cents. We took the high end, and we compared the total budget, what they budget each year. In this year's budget, we have 186,663 budgeted. If we cut 78,055, which is broke down into the wages, FICA, IFRS, that'll give them a total of 5,454 hours, which is almost 250 more than the current year, which gives them a little leeway. And the current year's a little higher than the other two years, not quite 19.5 because of COVID, extra things going on. So this would give them plenty of hours. If they don't make the hours, they always come back for a budget amendment. But it appears this would give them 120,000. That should be enough. So we recommend a cut of 78,055 dollars in the courthouse security based in general supplemental.
And once again, that is budgeted by hours and not by money necessarily because of the, just the coverage of the security crew at the elections and everyday business and so forth.
Could I also note that this is going to continue every year unless we make a change in the PAA forms as far as the position budgeting, as far as what we're budgeting and how we're doing that?
Okay. Do we have a motion to receive?
I'll move it.
Motion by Reddick.
Second.
Second by Monson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's actually a reduction. Yes, yes. 78,055.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Improvement requests.
This was a request that was in the budget. We did take it back out to deal with at this time. You find the actual numbers in the back of your budget book on the improvement side. It's the first page in there. It's a total of 61,554, which includes the wage, full-time wage, FICA, IFRS, optimization, all your benefits, things like that. So now it's up to the board. Pat, I think it's going to be a little presentation, and then the board decide what they'd like to do.
This will be a general basic expense, Dennis?
General supplemental.
General sup. I feel like Donald Trump ripping off my...
You remind me of Donald Trump.
Okay.
You brought it up.
This is, just to start off, I'm going to give you a little history lesson of what occurred here. I'm Pat Gill. I'm the Woodbury County Auditor and Commissioner of Elections. About 1,000 years ago, there was a clerk added in the auditor's office, and that even precedes Mr. Monson during that period of time. It's that the auditor's admin and elections administration were to be shared. And what happened during that period of time is that there was growing need, because we just had, what we have now is just the deputy auditor and one clerk that administers the payroll and accounts payable. And over a period of time, they, also with elections, and it continues to happen, is that there's an increased demand for duties in elections. And during that period of time, the collective bargaining agreement was considered because at that time, and I'm sure it's still true, is that if you have a clerk, temporary help that you have over six months, you can be grieved because of that for the collective bargaining agreement. Because essentially what you're doing is having a person there that is not getting benefits, and you need a full-time benefit. You need a full-time equivalent. And that's what J.D. Peller Sals had told me at the time. So that's when we hired that person. And the decision that determined the factor of where that went to was to go to the auditor's side or the election's side, was that general sup levy was unlimited, and at that time, the general basic levy is limited. And it's still on the books, it's limited. Still at 350, right, Dennis? Is that right? But we've always exceeded that for a period of time. We weren't doing it at that time. That's how long ago it was. We didn't exceed the 350 cap in general basic. And what happens is that you can have your budget appealed if you exceed the 350. And that's never happened since then, and as, it was an arbitrary figure, a 350, that was the cap that was put in there, but we've exceeded it for several years. How long do you think that's been going on, Dennis?
They've seen the cap, six, seven years.
Yeah, okay. So election demands were increasing, increased, and limited the auditor's support. So what it means is that we had, we had that clerk, an additional clerk, but they were supposed to share responsibilities between the elections and the auditor's side of things. And at that time, the budget analyst was, Dennis was in our office, and so he performed a lot of those duties that, the auditor's duties, tax list and that sort of thing. But as we started to move along, and then the budget, the election demands continued to increase, so we, the auditor was struggling to keep up with, and that continues to this day. And we'll get into it a little bit. I'll talk a little bit more about that at that time. But the budget tax analyst was moved to the supervisor's support staff. We continue to work, as you can see today, being demonstrated, is that we work hand-in-hand with the supervisor's office, with Dennis, and doing payroll and working as the support staff to the budget. Because the budget actually, in the state of Iowa, is all the responsibility of the board of supervisors. But we do that because it's a, it's a good practice to have a second set of eyes go through that. We didn't used to do that, and that did cause some problems along the way. But, so it makes a big difference that they're working together. When the budget tax analyst was moved to the supervisor's office, some of those duties that Dennis used to do, he no longer does. And that's assumed by Michelle, and she, and she's gone through everything that's happened. And since Michelle has arrived, it takes a lot of time, and she puts in a lot of hours. 50, 50 hours when they were doing the implementation of the new software, Michelle was putting 50 to 60 hours in a week in order to keep up with it. But the auditors, so what has occurred in the auditor's administrative burden is that she does that tax list that Dennis used to do, website management. That's something that we've been struggling to keep up with, because we, the minutes that you do, that's what we try to focus on, is making sure that when people want to look, to find anything that you folks have done, is it's on the budget, it's on the website, the county's website, when it says "copy file." But if you look, how far are we behind now, Michelle?
We're probably a year behind now. The Kyler project really took a lot of time, and so the website updates have been left behind.
So that just means when you can't, when you go to "copy file," it's not there, no. I mean, we have to, we have to admit to that. Internal controls, one of the things that we did, probably over a year ago, Matthew was running the policy committee, and we implemented, well, we approved a personal property disposition policy in fixed assets. We haven't been doing that either. We don't have the, we don't have the time to do that. I've talked with Kenny about that. He suggested that where that should go is under the auditor's purview to do that, so that we can keep track, because we assume some of those responsibilities if you look at that, that policy.
What did that policy accomplish?
What that policy does is that you have disposition of assets, and Rocky and I have been talking about this, too, is that when assets are, when the county gets rid of an asset, you're supposed to, for transparency purposes that we talked about, is that there's supposed to be a form out there that any time any property is disposed of, personal property from the county, is that on a monthly basis, a department is supposed to give to the building services and WCICC and our office. There's a form that's supposed to be developed, and it hasn't been developed. But what it is supposed to do on a monthly basis for transparency, show when property is being disposed of and how it happens. So there's supposed to be a form, and it's supposed to be on the website, and that's been over a year, and we haven't implemented that either. And it's just because we're trying to, we just didn't have the help on Michelle's side of doing things. Audit capability, this is one thing that changed. Mark's been around a long time, too, on this, is that, believe it or not, I'm called the auditor, but I never had the ability to audit county funds. Never had that until a few years ago. It was added as a duty to the auditor's office, is that we have the ability to audit county funds and how they're being spent, and goes along with, because of claims that are given to you. We never had the ability to hold up or ask or question a claim during that period of time. Is that the auditor's office didn't do it, that was the board of supervisors, and I was told by the county attorney, our duties were strictly ministerial. Until this, until another section was added to the code for the auditor's duties, that we did have the ability to, to audit. I routinely would request at budget time an additional $20,000 to hire somebody to do internal auditing, just to cover that.
Was that changed locally or at the state level?
It was at the state level. And so it goes back to that disposition of property and what Rocky had asked me about back a few months ago, about the ability to, to audit and to deal with the county's financial policies. There's part of those financial policies that haven't been taken care of either during that period of time. And that's the ability to do an inventory, and that actually is under the board of supervisors' responsibility, and that hasn't been done, that hasn't been done since it was implemented. How long ago was that, Dennis?
Well, it's been a while. We tried to do one, but it went out of order fully.
I think that was Mr. Monson accompanying you on that task, to try to get that done. So, I mean, those are just examples of what, you know, if we have policies on the books, we should be doing it. We should be implementing, we should be doing them. And if we don't, then we should get rid of them.
So the array of policies right now, we're not fulfilling, again, result of local decision-making or state decision-making?
Local decision-making, because we don't have the resources to do it in our office or the board of supervisors.
So you're saying you're supposed to not fulfilling state mandates?
No, it's not. As far as the state mandate, as far as the auditor being able, the capability of to audit, it said the auditor may. It's not a shell. What I do is I request that money from you folks, because that covers me. As I said, I made the effort to get the resources. They weren't provided to me, so we're not doing that. Okay?
So these activities are not musts, they are shoulds?
As far as doing that extra step and being able to perform those duties, when you gave, when you pass a policy and you give that responsibility to the auditor's office, then we have to get the resources in order to do it, and we haven't been afforded those resources.
As far as, you know, as far as the state is concerned, are these musts or shoulds? As far as, as far as the state is concerned, are these musts or shoulds?
No, there are policies that you pass. And so it's not, it's not a responsibility of the auditor by state law. It's that when there are duties that you, there are policies that you pass, and if we're not doing them, then I need to get the resources to do that. I'm just giving you history building up to this.
Okay.
I appreciate, I honestly appreciate the questions because it's very clarifying.
Can I make some corrections real quick?
Sure.
If the board can hear me, that's fine.
No, step up here please.
So the disposition policy is on the county website. It's underneath the auditor's tab. And the forms to sell anything is also under that same tab. And the items that the county has sold with building services knowledge in the last, I think it goes back to July, I think it goes back to July of nineteen, don't hold me that date, but all the products that have been sold through that disposition policy back to that time are all listed there.
Is that recent or?
As of last week.
Okay. Clarify, it's recent. Yes, it hasn't been done because it was brought to our attention. And I know I did check with building services and it wasn't done up until a week ago. And I haven't seen that form yet, so, just to clarify. Good. Accounts payable, payroll, quality control, that's something that we just don't have time to do. We strictly ministerial, we move stuff through there and as Michelle has been trying to implement payroll and accounts payable, accounts payable, we do a fairly good job of keeping track of that. But that's why we, we made some moves. The county's financial policies already covered that. And grant monitoring has always been a question mark in, in this county. We actually had a grant monitoring clerk at one time after we got some bad publicity. And it, it's changed, but as far as the audit goes, we do a fairly good job with grant monitoring. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. But it is something that Michelle has brought to my attention, that she feels that we should be, we could be doing a better job. So elections administrative burden is that the precinct election official retention and training. Just where I'm moving, trying to get to at this point, is that we kind of cannibalize the elections department because for several years, as Michelle and Jean Jessen before her, is that we knew that, you know, we, we just haven't been able to keep up with the demands as far as those policies and those sorts of things that we're supposed to be doing in the auditor's office. And so as elections became more complicated, it started to eat away at the ability for the elections clerk to help out, to provide support on the auditor's side. So this last year's election was the election from hell. We increased scrutiny. What we learned through our precinct election official recruitment, retention and training. It was very stressful to get through this election with the amount of, with the precinct election officials we had. We constantly were trying to keep up with just manning those positions or, I don't know if that's correct terminology, but trying to get people in those places that were trained. And we were spoiled because over the years, we've had precinct election officials that always come back and we were exposed this year because of the pandemic, a lot of the precinct election officials. I'd estimate that we had sixty percent new precinct election officials. And I don't think that's going to change. And plus the election duties that legislature changes every year and, you know, I've been here for twenty-four years, probably the first ten, fourteen years, there wasn't a lot of changes that took place in elections, but it has been now. And they're under increased scrutiny and you know what's going on now. And it's, it's not just from, you know, one party or the other, both parties are very concerned about what's going on in elections and they're scrutinizing everything we did. On election day this year, I spent the entire day just running from precinct to precinct, dealing with complaints from both parties, trying to keep everybody happy and talking to people because we had precinct election officials that just were cleaned properly, have to admit that, but that was because we had people canceling right up to the day before the election. And so it was, it was difficult to do that. We had some, we had the potential to, to really face some real problems, but we, we got it done. But what, the lesson I learned from that is that we have to do a much better job of recruitment, retention and training. And we have, and that is going to, eventually, we're going to see that in those individual election budgets, is that we're going to have to be doing that. Like I said, legislation continues to change at an increasing level. We have to do voter, voter registration maintenance. This is something that Susan Stewart just talked to me recently about and said, boy, she said, those lists are lousy, we need to get them maintained. We, we do a pretty good job of that, but the laws prevent you from doing that, but we could be a little more active in what we're doing as far as voter registration maintenance. That's, that's what we do most of the time when we don't have elections because that's what people always say, well, you only have two elections a year, what else do you do the rest of the year? There's a lot of work involved in administration of elections. And facing it, like I said, there's more scrutiny and there's a lot more demand from both parties asking for data from local elections now. We never faced that before, but we're constantly asked about data and trying to provide it to people. Polling place management is another thing that, that was a big one this year and it's going to continue to be as we deal with, going with being able to use vote centers and that sort of thing. We moved from churches back into the schools this year, so that's, that, that was a huge effort to get that done. And, and it was successful. I wanted to make sure, personally, I wanted to make sure that it was done because that was going to be the last time the voter could see what kind of job I was doing when they went to those polling places. And so we made sure that those polling places were well managed and they did it. And the same thing occurs on that side, is website management. We have a, just for the data that I was talking about, we have a lot more demand for that data and the website management, it's very difficult to keep up with that. Steve can attest to that. So that's just the history of where we're at. And so at that time, unfortunately, we had a long time election clerk pass away a year ago. And at that time, I made the decision, and it was one that kind of cannibalized things, is that we gave another position on the elections, on the auditor's administrative side. And the reason I made that decision is because I know that we need the resources over there, but elections provides us with the opportunity to do a little more with temporary help, to bring on temporary help, because we build that into our budgets. And so that's why I made the decision to change that, to move that position over there, much to Steve's chagrin that we did that. But it was just one that I thought that was our priority at the time, is that we needed to get Michelle help because as I said, she can't get it done in the forty hours that she has now. And so we're trying to make sure that she has the resources she needs in order to get her job done. So what changed since that decision to swap those positions? And, you know, the additional focus on the auditor's administrative duties, when that opportunity came along to change that, Michelle and I sat down, we talked about the duties and the resources that were needed, that I laid out for you, that, that we haven't been able to accomplish. And so we moved that position over there. But then, the 2020 general election experience that I just alluded to, and that is not something that is short-term. It's going to be a long-term focus that we're going to have to deal with. So the budget impact is that that position, as Dennis gave you the improvement request, it's a total of sixty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars to increase, to put another position over on the election side. And that is in the general supplemental levy. And Dennis has assured me that we can put that position in this year without an increase in the levy. You can do that. But I have to look long-term, is that, it's not just a one year, it's just not a short-term fix. So I, if you're going to do this, you're going to have to make that commitment, realize that it is a long-term expense.
Are you going to be able to fulfill all those unmet obligations with this one position?
We're going to do the best that we can. I think that we'll go a long way towards doing that. I'm sure that Michelle's going to be able to do that. But what, what I really need is the help in elections full-time because we're going to, what's going to happen is if you reject this decision tonight, is that I will have to put it in, you'll see increase in the other budgets for elections, the general election, primary bugs and the city budget. Matthew and I talked about that before, is I have more flexibility to do that. And so, you know, it might be that, you know, if you didn't do that during the school board election this year, is that might end up with a budget amendment in order to make sure that we meet all our responsibilities that we need. And that's what, and I honestly believe that's what's going to occur during that period of time. If you don't do it, we'll have to do it through temporary and we will run up against the same reason that we added that position a long time ago, was because of the collective bargaining So I'm asking for your support for this improvement request because it's resources that we truly need in order to make sure that we're meeting the responsibilities of what you folks have put on us and what our state obligated responsibilities are.
Is personally salaried or hourly?
Hourly. It's another clerk's position. It's just to replace the one that we gave up and moved over to the auditor's side.
Sixty-one five, that is taking into account, was overtime potentially worked?
Yes. That, anything other than that will be in separate budgets, but the budget that you have now, what do we show Dennis there as the elections administrative budget?
For overtime?
Yeah.
You have a second.
And that's a good thing to point out too, is that, that's what would occur to.
Well, he's looking, I mean, who are you looking for? He's been for someone with a master's degree, someone with a bachelor's degree?
No, it's just a.
Nationwide?
No, it's just a clerk position that we already had and those folks.
We don't have any budget.
So it's all in the?
For overtime.
Okay.
Right. It's probably a budget in each individual, each individual election, I believe.
It is in, I mean, it's for temporary help in those times.
Here's like general, we had overtime, thousand fifty dollars. So each election would have overtime dedicated back to?
And that's what I was describing, is that would take place, is that those, those costs would increase. Any other questions?
As you went through this, the more I listened, the more I thought, gee, how many positions is he wanting here? Are you going to return in six months or a year and say, oh, I got to have more?
No, I honestly don't think so. I think that with the, I mean, honestly, I shouldn't have done anything with the election side. And I should have requested the position for the auditor's side. Because that's where, in our elections, we can do it, we have flexibility because we're able to hire temporary people. It's in the budget to do that. But on Michelle's side is that we didn't have the ability to do that and, and the elections clerks just aren't able to respond. They used to be able to help out. Kim backs up the clerk over there for payroll and accounts payable. But it's just been much more difficult for it to happen. And as that transition happened, when Dennis moved to your office, those were responsibilities that Michelle has taken over. Dennis knows how to do them, but Michelle's doing them now. And it, you know, continues to, to happen, is that she's, she needs that help, but it, the benefit is, is that Michelle is doing a lot more as far as the budget support than what was previously done. Is that correct Dennis?
They do all payroll. Which is pretty big really.
Payroll budgeting, that's what he's talking, referring to.
They know all the contracts, they have it all set up in Kyler, Kyler, so it works pretty well. Where did we end up at the end of earlier bunch of discussions as far as auditor's office?
What, what happened was that there was just a shift from general sup to general basic, is a one-person position. So really didn't increase anything other than it went from general sup to general basic levy.
But just in terms of spending levels?
Sixty-one thousand five hundred and.
That's a disposition, but just in other areas of your budget?
Pardon?
In other areas of your budget. So I know this is sixty-one five, but as a result of other, early discussions?
Right.
Where were we at with the county, the auditor's office?
There hasn't, they only increased in any of my budgets, where the administrative budgets, were just due to collective bargaining agreements.
So out of curiosity, the sixty-one, are you borrowing from some of these elections to help cover the full cost?
Right now, we're not because we're still in the budget year that was covered. But that's what I was alluding to, is that's what we will be forced to do.
Right.
Is that you're going to, you're going to pay for it one way or another.
Would it not make more sense to charge this to the election side themselves? Because then wouldn't they be somewhat reimbursable from the other entities that require elections?
I think on that, some of that administrative costs, they can't charge back.
Really?
Is that correct?
Yeah. And we do, we do charge and there's revenues in there from.
Right. And I know that, I was just wondering, like, would that not count for something that?
It really doesn't impact because administrative expenses are not something we can bill for. We bill for printing and those sorts of things to, back to those entities. Schools get billed, the city gets billed, but for the general election, that all comes out of general supplemental.
Pat, you mentioned the decision to swap and that you should have requested it through the auditor's side. So if that was done, would your presentation essentially be the same?
It would have been when I requested a position for the auditor's side. Would have been the same presentation. Any other questions?
I don't know. Personally, I always have a hard time adding any new positions. And I, I kind of get the position you're in and why you're asking and I'm not.
Right. We need the help. For years, we've never increased any positions in our office. In fact, we made the choice when we have the grant monitor position, I cut that position. And over the years, we've been very good. You don't see much growth in any of our budgets for several years. It has always been pretty much the same, as the only increase has been through the collective bargaining agreements.
When was the last time you added a staff, full-time staff?
Like I said, I don't know, it was a long time, it was before Mark. When do you think that occurred Dennis?
I think the only time you ever had staff in the auditor office was probably never. Old reporters, the old.
Old reporters, the only reason they had staff there is they inherited vital staff from the auditor department where they had to have, like, two or three people.
It's probably been twenty years when I added that one clerk that we're talking about. It's probably been twenty years when I added the clerk that I referred to, why we originally did that, was when it came in, is that we just needed more help, and both sides needed the help. And as I said, during that period of time, we, it was at Dennis' suggestion that we do it on the election side, because it was general sup, and that is an unlimited levy, and we had the cap that we had to deal with for general basic for the auditor's side.
I know our basic discussions have been to hold the line on costs, and obviously, we've done a good job with that. I guess I'm questioning, just trying to look at the offset and the balance, if we add an FTE at sixty-one and such, or how much a budget amendment would be if we tried to limp by one more year?
Well, you're going to get by one more year without a levy increase. You're going to do that now. That's what Dennis has told me. For this year, it's not going to increase your levy.
I think he's, I think, I think you're asking something else.
I'm asking, basically, I'm saying, we, we denied at least one other FTE to one of the other offices in here, and it was in an effort to keep our levy as low as possible, our overall levy as low as possible, by not adding jobs. So my question is, or I should say, my thought is, I would like to try, since we denied another office, to try and go one more year, and then my question was, if you came back for a budget amendment, what do you think that would be, approximately?
For, for next, for this year, there won't be, for twenty-two, is what you're talking about, is it's going to be, it's going to be close to that amount, because I'm going to have to, I'm not kidding you, I'm going to have to have that person there. And then we do, I don't know if you can, if we still run up against that, as far as keeping a temporary person in a clerk's position for over a period of time.
My question is, are you talking a temporary employee of Woodbury County, or a temporary employee of another place?
We could do it through a temp agency.
Right.
Saying is that it's still going to cost you the same, it's going to cost you more-
With the temp agency?
Because the expense that we have with temporary employees, is we go through a temp agency, and say, this is something JD told me to do a long time, we would try it around. And so, we are, no concession here, but we are a skirt issue about the collective bargaining by doing that. If we're, if we're intentionally holding on to a person that we know is going to be in that temporary position for an extended period of time, it's-
My opinion would be that the collective bargaining agreement would only cover an employee of Woodbury County.
Right. Immediately, that's the answer you have to give. But you understand what we're talking about.
I'm not sure temporary employees, right? I know they're not part of the bargaining agreement, unless, like you said, if they were, Woodbury County employees would work over six and a-
How long a period of time?
Um, I'd have to look at that contract. I did not see anything, and they asked me courthouse contract, but you were talking about, you know, immediately when I just looked, it'd probably be more towards our employee handbook.
Towards what?
Our employee handbook regarding temporary employees. And if they even belong in the, the union contract, and it would spell it out in the union, who would belong, part-time or temporary.
That's the way that you're getting around it, because-
I experienced this at home. When you're over there, there's nothing.
Right. No, and that's what, what I'm saying is that, you know, we, we need the help, it's going to cost you the same thing regardless. I'm, I'll guarantee you that, as far as your question goes back to the temporary, is that what we did with JD when we first started doing this, is that we hire temporary people at the same rate that we do for clerk, at a clerk level. So we pay them, plus we pay a fee to them, plus all the other expenses that go along with it. So how does that compare, Steve, to?
Well, if you break it down to an hour, we're getting paid, working more for an hourly rate to the temp agency because of their lockup or their fee that they charge us, if we were just paying them here, we'd pay a lower hourly rate.
Wouldn't you make up for it, and the liability, and all the other side of things?
It's, yeah, it's a wash, basically. That's what I'm just saying, is that you, you know, you're going to pay for it one way or the other, and what we're doing is kind of skirting the issue about, and then the collective bargaining. And that's, that was that JD suggested, because we had, we had those issues bouncing back and forth, when we had increased the absentee demand, increased greatly, increases every year, and so we have to bring people on sooner than that, and so-
So in the coming year, you've got, what, a couple of elections, maybe a couple of school boards?
We have a, what we have is the city primary, and I'm pretty sure we're going to have a city primary this year. And then we have the combination of the school and city. They combined those elections, so we have, you know-
Those are small, smaller areas, you're not talking entire county. City would be the city, and the school board would be a school district, and-
Well, it's combined now, so we open all our polling places, and we have to do that for the primary, too, because what, when they combined the city and the school election, for a long period of time, we were using vote centers to reduce our costs there. But now, because of the way that they combined them, I still have to open all forty-four precincts because of the overlap between school districts and city boundaries. So I have to open every polling place. Used to be, for the city, especially the city primary, I used to be able to save a lot of money by doing that, by using the vote center.
You also got a general primary, too, I think you do, too, twenty-two?
Right. Forgot about that. That's another, that's what I'm just saying, is that you're going to pay for it one way or the other, and it's pretty much the same expense that it goes to. Not pulling your leg, that's an honest assessment.
You're saying it's, it's not just for the elections that this person would be working, right? They would be filling in, in quite a bit of other areas?
Right. I mean, we're not going to have people sitting around twiddling their thumbs. I'm just saying is that we have all these responsibilities. You have asked us for some, and then the elections legislation that occurs every year, and they're going to work us over pretty good this year, is that there's just more responsibility, more duties to do during that period of time. And plus, you know, the financial policies, doing those sorts of things that you folks have asked about, is, I've been honest with you, Rocky, about not being able to do that, you know, because we don't have the resources to do that.
If it was a year from now, I'd be all in favor of it, but based on what I've tried to figure out on what's been done on the budget, mm-mm, it's tough.
It doesn't, doesn't affect your levy this year. This budget that you're considering now, it doesn't affect your levy. And so, you're talking about that year, and at some point, you can pay me now or pay me later, but it doesn't affect it. And so, it would be much better for us, much more efficient, to get that person on now, in order so that we can do the things that we need to do.
Anyone else?
I think the requirements upon the auditor's office in the last twenty years have certainly increased. One reason being, this board's renewed focus on internal auditing, which is a catch-all for creating and updating and following policies that help all of us. If we want information, one of the first people any of us will call or talk to is Pat Gill and his office. What my issue is, and not with the proposal, but my issue with the current picture, is that when we request inventory, or audits, or want to follow a policy that was a good policy, it still is a good policy, it just can't be followed. And so our, it's kind of like when your, when your mouth is ahead of your mind, or something like that, you're, you're, you're trying to do something, and then you're not following it because you don't have the resources. And if this was specifically for elections, I'd feel differently, but knowing it's, it's basically an auditor's position to assist the auditor's office, knowing the circumstances of the need being great enough to swap an employee over, I'll be supportive of this, and I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Ung, second by Monson.
I do have another question, I guess. If you had like a temporary, or an increase for temp employee of like, a smaller amount, twenty thousand, twenty, twenty-five thousand, something in there, would that get you partway there?
Honestly, Keith, it's just the same thing that I've said previously, is it's going to cost you the same amount, no matter what. It's going to come from the general sup, that we do that, and it's going to cost you, in the long run, it'll be the same. And it's just, we need, we need the help now. We need to be able to move into, biggest thing on the election side is precinct election officials. That is not going to, that situation is not going to improve this year. And plus, all the other things that we've talked about, that we need the help. And I've, I've done it for twenty years, is that we've done as much as we can, but the burden has just increased that much that we need another employee.
Can we do a roll call vote, please?
And the question is, do we hire another person for the auditor's office? That's a yea. If we're against it, it's a nay. Okay.
Monson?
Yea.
Raddig?
No.
Ung?
Aye.
Wright?
No.
DeWitt?
Nay.
Pat, it's because we told the other department no.
Pardon?
For me, it's because we told the other department no.
Um, I mean, the vote's been taken, I'm not going to argue with you.
Item C, community economic development and zoning, vehicle and parking.
Yeah, this was brought back because we have a zoning truck, and we have a zoning car. We're paying for two parking spots over here, the board discussed that, going maybe down to one vehicle, the suggestion is go down to the truck. If they had a choice, they'd just soon keep the truck, park the truck back over where the zoning car is, take the zoning car, see if Secretary Rosenes, somebody in the county needs another vehicle. So we'd save, it's not a big amount of money, but you're trimming it down from two vehicles to one vehicle, and eliminating a parking spot over here.
There we go, have Kenny auction that thing off, then?
Do what?
Auction the vehicle off, or what are we going to do?
Either that, or check see if an other department within the county needs a vehicle. I don't know if there is.
We didn't have any requests.
Then you auction it off. The money go back into rural basic, because that's where it's funded from. Let's go right with that.
What do you want to do with that? You vote on it, or?
Yeah, I think that's what we have to do, isn't it, Pat?
Yes.
Well, on that, I know, you know, just talking with them, you know, doesn't seem like they would need two vehicles hardly ever, anyway. So, it just doesn't make sense to keep paying for the spot and maintaining a second vehicle. So, I think we should get rid of it, I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddig, second by Monson, to find another home for the vehicle, either by sale or another department, and to eliminate a second, or the parking spot?
It's what it's got, five to six fifty.
Basically eliminates that parking spot, but it'll also the impending costs of vehicle replacement and repair and maintenance, so.
So do you need anything else on the vehicle sale, then, at this point, Pat?
Uh, no, it doesn't, this is on the budget, we can, we'll handle that later.
Okay.
Now, if, if you follow procedure, if another department doesn't step forward, then we would turn it over to Kenny for sale?
Yeah, I'm thinking.
No.
No?
So let me make the disposition policy completely clear. Karen, if you can back up to where you were at earlier, is that possible?
Karen's busy enough with all the callers.
Thank you, Karen.
Oh, hi, David.
So, on the screen behind you, I'm sorry, gentlemen, is the disposition policy and the tab for the form for sales. Now, the disposition policy states on vehicles, that that's to be done by the county auditor. With that said, the auditor's department, to my knowledge, has not used the GovDeals website that we do auction things off on. Building Services auctioned many things off on it, and we can assist the auditor's office with doing that, if they request so, but that would fall under PAT.
Okay.
Also, Karen, if you can back up, there's two other tabs there, or I'm sorry, Michelle, there's two other tabs there. The second one is the personal property disposition form, that you talked about earlier. So, anyone requesting to sell anything can fill that form out and submit it, and that's what we'll look at when we look at doing an auction. The next tab down, if you'll go back to it, Michelle, now, the last one. There are all the items that we sold back to, it looks like December two thousand eighteen.
So, in a nutshell, we have a plan to dispose of it, one way or another?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what, that's what I need to hear. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item D, supervisors' comm center, reduction of nineteen thousand four hundred and fifty-nine, and that returns to general basic, Dennis?
Um, yes. Lynn Sadek called me, said he did reduce it, or the, their actual board did reduce it by that dollar amount, so recommend to reduce their allocation by nine two thousand four fifty-nine.
I'll move to receive. Motion by DeWitt, second by Wright. Any other comments? It's always nice to see it go down. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass is five zero. FY twenty-two, final review.
Okay, originally, put this in here, if anybody had any, our ideas right now, we do have one more week, we can go, and then a half percent of, after next Tuesday, you know, whatever pressure you want to make. Otherwise, I'll come back with a recap where we're at. Right now, we are ahead of the, I call it head of the game, we are actually keeping tax rate flat for our free funds aboard King Control, and we're actually putting back into reserves a hundred six thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars of general basic. General sup, we're putting a hundred forty-three thousand nine sixty-eight, and- And rural basic's $98.53, but I need to use that to get us under the 2%. So it'll be a flat, you know, into the reserves, we'll keep our tax rate under 2%. The way it stands now, we still have to have that public hearing March 9th for our maximum levies. Even though we are over 2%, the difference is if we're over the 2%, take a super majority. When we're under 2%, it takes a simple majority, 5.3 vote or 5.0 vote, 4.1 vote, either way. So that's for that, I'll come back with actually the budget put together on the state form to show you. Have a little recap here, also have a recap where our tax rates are and our tax askings. Now, even though we're keeping a flat tax rate in our three funds, I want everybody to know there's still a tax asking increase because of new valuations coming on board, differentials, rollbacks, abatements coming off taxpayers, things like that. That we can't control. All we control is the tax rates.
So do?
We do have a flat tax rate, the tax rate would be just a shade under what it is now for our three funds, we can control.
So what do we need for this item?
This item is just kind of review now, we really need nothing. The big kicker now would be what we're doing with that farm. If the farm is sold, if we get a decent price for it, the board can choose to put it all in one year, to our debt service or split it. The recommendation would be, say hypothetically, you've got a million dollars, you put a $500,000 here, and 522, 23, and 23, 24, we'll have revenue coming in with the completion of jail and federal. But that's our big kicker, and I don't have to know that really until potentially June 1st. Because they, once we set our tax rate, we can't go up, we go down. So they, I checked already with the state farm management, if we do that, we can reduce it. So I guess the decision has to be made on selling the farm and go from there.
Where is the farm?
We'll be putting that, I believe, on next week. I think it's going to be on next week's agenda, Matthew.
Okay.
Talked to PJ, and I believe that's what we settled on was next week. He will have it on next Tuesday's agenda, but I will talk to him again Friday at the latest, but we'll go.
Then in regards to debt service, there's two actual items that could possibly reduce the debt service before we actually certify, the state certifies back to us. One is a budget of a million eight for CIP projects this year. Right now, we're at $1,564,000, I believe. So we've got a gap of a quarter million there, because you don't know what's going to happen with the courthouse, the jail, whatever, between now. So we'll have to make a final decision by May before we go out and borrow the money. So if we do reduce that million eight down to a million six, that's another $50,000 plus the interest will go back to reducing that levy. Also, I talked to our financial advisor on our next borrowing for the jail. They're estimating potentially now it could be down to 2% for our tax exempt. And with that rate there, it's about 4,600 to 1% less, which will save another $125,000 a year. Now, with our CIP advantage here, I talked to the bank over here where you borrow that, they're almost down to 1% interest. So when our CIP comes through, I may have estimated, say, 2%, 1% will be less, you know, a little less there. And I'll add that.
Is it fair to say the quarter million we're currently leaving in there is, is, is kind of earmarked for anything that happens with the jail?
Yes.
So in a way?
Unless it's straight maintenance.
Right.
That's the key there, is maintenance, and we're going to have to cover through our reserves.
So through, you know, October 2022, it, we may have a potential need for something in the jail that is limping along right now. So my point is, the entire amount under debt service, we could really consider just due to the moving process, one, and the new construction, too, of the law enforcement center.
Yes. The big hit this year was something that wasn't totally expected, I think, Kenny. We got a CIP that was presented aboard this last year, was building right here, $1,083,000 for our HBEC. Nobody anticipated that, really. I think Kenny knew that it wasn't going to last forever, just like the jail. And something like that, as a physical, it's usually when you do a borrowing for CIP, and these last five years or longer. These at least last the extent of our loan, otherwise we're just, just not good. So I spend our criteria somewhat on CIP projects, they have to last at least five years and they aren't maintenance. And Kenny's been very good at that, you know, the water problem up there by Crossport, I believe that we considered that maintenance, so.
And that was a million four?
A million one.
Million one for that?
Well, approximately, just shade under that.
Okay.
But we've had other projects, you know, we have the computers upstairs, emergency service, with that's about $100, about $80,000. There's different categories, and I can break that down too, what we've all raised up, or obligated.
Yeah, I just want it known to the public that as it stands now, the debt service levy increase is, is due to the, is mandated at this point. The taxpayer has approved it, and as part of the move, we still need to operate out of the old facility until it is built. And we're being very hopeful by budgeting, you know, a quarter or less of the amount that we needed for an emergency repair of a similar issue in the courthouse. In regards to the mental health levy increase, is it?
That went up about $70,000, which is very small. Yes, what it turned out to be. Well, $146,000, $146,000 less than, about a penny increase in mental health. But again, the board really didn't have a whole lot of control in that, because that's done by the region. Bush Rocky is one of the members that's on that region board. And the problem there is the state mandates juvenile care. They moved the core services to the core plus, core plus, you don't have to, core you have to do. Problem is, they shift that back to court with no funding. And that's going to put every region in a heck of a project, to say the least.
Well, and the only way to, we can't necessarily reduce that today. It's, it's to just offset it by reductions in the three major levies, correct?
Right.
Which we've done at this point.
Just a shade under what the current rates are right now, correct?
Thank you.
So next week, I'll have an agenda, the final, final review, basically. If anybody thinks of anything, I'm just hoping to get it on the agenda. But we say a final review of the budget, that will put that budget wide open to any.
Okay. We good? Normal starting time next week, 4:30?
Fine with me.
We don't need any action on the final item, again, Dennis, we're, next week, it's going to be the lap.
It'll be the final. There, the region, the maximum levies are going to be set when we have our hairy March 9th, but still means you can still reduce at the public hearing, but we just can't do it.
Whoa. We are adjourned.